Alright, heads up everybody, welcome to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. This is July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting will now come to order. Alright, next up is the ceremonial opening, so if you would please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Alright, thank you everybody, may be seated. Alright, adoption of tonight's agenda, I understand we might have a request to change, Town Manager?
Uh, yes Mayor, thank you and good evening everybody, just have a request to add one additional item to the agenda, it would be item F-one under recognitions, uh, recognition and introduction of Dex Wilson as the new Waxaw Police Chief.
Alright, very good, alright, I'm gonna need a motion on that change, any other changes requested? Alright, can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Oh, I did forget to check in on you Charlie, I saw you on there, so, uh, we'll pause for half a second. Nick, can you help him? I think you're getting a call, Charlie, he can't hear me anyway.
Maybe it's the owl?
We'll pause for a second here. Everybody's been real quiet, Charlie. Charlie, are you able to hear my microphone? Okay, I think we're testing it for ya. Alright, Charlie, do a quick test here for ya. Is that good for you, Charlie? Evidently not. They're working on it, hang on.
Possibly.
The person that we're talking to is our town attorney, he's remote today.
He's giving the thumbs up there.
Oh, he's got it.
He's got it? Charlie, you're good? Alright, we're good. Very good, thank you, perfect. Alright, we will, we will continue on, we had... Alright, so we had a motion up, I think is where we left off? And so the motion was to...
Adopt the agenda as amended.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're good. Alright, so that item will move to F-one, correct Jeff?
Yes, that's correct.
We're really good with the mics today, aren't we?
Yeah.
That's great. Alright, so there's nobody to sign up Barbie on any other public comments, so...
That's correct.
Alright, very good, we'll move down to the consent agenda, so can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as published?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as published.
Motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. Now we'll get down to recognitions, Town Manager Jeff Wells.
Alright, thank you Mayor and good evening, Mr. Wilson, would you mind coming up here please? So, I am pleased to announce the promotion of Dexter Wilson to the position of Police Chief. Chief Wilson has been an integral part of the Waxaw Police Department for over seventeen years, and his extensive experience and dedication make him the perfect candidate to lead our police force into the future. Throughout his tenure Dexter Wilson has demonstrated exceptional leadership skills, a deep understanding of community needs, and a commitment to fostering positive relationships between law enforcement and the community. Chief Wilson has consistently shown a passion for advancing community-oriented policing strategies and is dedicated to maintaining high standards of integrity and professionalism. As always, the town of Waxaw would like to extend its gratitude to the residents, local businesses, and community partners for their continued support of the Waxaw Police Department. So, want to welcome Dex here, welcome to the community, your new police chief, Mr. Dexter Wilson.
Welcome Chief.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Perotan Board, uh, Town Manager, thank you so much for your kind words, I want to thank you for the opportunity to lead the men and women of the Waxaw Police Department. We've come a long way over the years, and, uh, I'm honored and I'm humbled at the same time to accept the position. We have a great department, I intend to continue to grow the relationships with other town departments, other police departments, and the Union County Sheriff's Office, and most importantly with our community. Chief Collins has laid a great foundation for us at the Waxaw Police Department, and we continue to, uh, we want to continue to build upon that, and, uh, I just thank you so much for this opportunity.
Awesome, thank you very much. No one escapes us. That's great, alright, thank you, thank you Jeff, appreciate that, alright, so, guess who gets the podium next? Chief, welcome back.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce you to Sergeant James Huntley. Uh, Sergeant James Huntley began his life as, life as service as a veteran of the US Army. After moving back to Union County, he began his career in law enforcement at the Monroe Police Department. He served twenty-one years before joining the department in Waxaw. Sergeant Huntley is, was a devoted employee with the town for eleven years. With thirty-two total years of dedicated service to the community, he retired in April first of two thousand and twenty. His leadership and dedication speaks for itself, and that is why we have asked him to return to the Waxaw Police Department to serve part-time in a role of Community Police Sergeant. I'll never forget when James, Sergeant James Huntley came to work for the Waxaw Police Department, I tried to recruit him for months, at the gym, I'm sure you remember that, at the Aquatic Center Monroe, uh, he finally decided on his own accord to join the department. I was fortunate to have worked, I was fortunate to have worked with Sergeant Huntley for many years, and saw firsthand his ability to speak with the public and the officers that worked for him. After much thought of how to get our community initiative kicked off sooner than later, I called Sergeant James Huntley, James Huntley and asked him if he might be interested in coming back to work. I tried to get him to come full-time, but he had to, but he had to accept his offer, I had to accept his offer of part-time as a community officer. He now patrols the parks, trails, and downtown businesses and continues to do an outstanding job for the town of Waxaw, and we appreciate his service.
Very good, congratulations. Always very visible, appreciate that, that's great. Alright Chief, you wanna get a photo up? Sure? Alright, great, you got it again. This is the only time you're gonna tell her what to do, so...
Sergeant Wetstone started his law enforcement career in the town of Waxaw in January of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, he has been the traffic officer of the Waxaw PD since December of two thousand and eighteen, and also serves on the department's special response team, mobile field force, and field training officer, so he wears a lot of hats. Prior to any law enforcement, he obtained his bachelor's in criminal justice at UNC Charlotte. Since beginning his career at the town of Waxaw, he has been awarded the Town's Above and Beyond Award and the award for most DWI arrest in two thousand and twenty-two. He feels his greatest accomplishment in recent times has been marrying his wife Hannah on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Her continual support, along with the support of the rest of his family, has been integral, integral in making him the man he is today, and we appreciate your service, and this is, this is much, uh, deserved. Your dedication to the Waxaw Police Department from the day you started here, I've never heard you say a negative word at any point in time, and I appreciate that. It means very positive things for the department, and I know you're gonna do great as Sergeant.
Great, congratulations. That's awesome, congratulations Sergeant. Alright Chief, you get to grandstand.
I'm not going anywhere yet. I think, uh, everybody knows Vic Montalvo and he doesn't need an introduction, but we're gonna do it anyway. After twenty-one years of service at the NYPD, Officer Vic Montalvo retired and moved with his wife and two small children to Waxaw, North Carolina, where he continued his law enforcement career with the Waxaw Police Department. Honestly thought he was crazy, but obviously he's not, he loves his job. Upon being hired, Officer Montalvo was assigned to bring back the DARE program as well as being heavily involved in the community relations. This past year's, this past year was Montalvo's tenth year teaching the DARE program, he has now taken on the full-time role as a DARE School Resource Officer at Waxaw Elementary School. This is the assignment that has meant the most to Officer Montalvo during his thirty-one years in law enforcement. During his time in the Waxaw Police Department, Officer Montalvo worked hard to obtain his intermediate, intermediate certificate, advanced certificate, and his certificate through North Carolina SRO Certification Program. He has risen to the rank of NPO three during this Waxaw career, which is the highest rank for patrolman in our department. His greatest accomplishment, uh, though, has been his partnership with local community leaders and businesses to help create the Back to School BASH, which is in its seventh year. The program continues to grow, and this year will help provide school supplies, clothing, and food over, to over seven hundred and fifty children in Waxaw and neighboring schools in Union County. We would like to lastly thank the citizens, he would like to lastly thank the citizens of, of the town of Waxaw, and the Waxaw employees, and they know who they are, uh, who have helped him over his amazing ten-year run. None of what was accomplished could have ever been done without their help and guidance. We will be hard-pressed to speak with any business owner or resident of Waxaw without hearing the name Vic Montalvo during the conversation, I think we all agree with that. Every neighborhood I go to, doesn't matter, you hear about Vic Montalvo. Uh, we've been walking businesses lately and all I hear is, where's Vic Montalvo? So I have to explain that he's now in the schools full-time, they don't see him as, as much, so it's a little hard. Uh, he has brought so much to the town over the last ten years and his accomplishments are plentiful, but in my opinion, he is, he has and continues to go above and beyond in the realm of community relations. When I think of community policing, the first image that comes to my mind is Vic Montalvo. It's your ten-year service award, thank you so much for all that you've done.
Alright, next item, fifteen-year service award, Chief?
To Sergeant Michael Feige, fifteen years. Sergeant, Sergeant Feige started his law enforcement career in the Waxaw Police Department fifteen years ago. Before starting his career in Waxaw, he was employed by the State of North Carolina as a corrections officer. He currently holds the position of Patrol Sergeant over C-Squad. He has been a sergeant for ten and a half years and has held this position of Narcotics and ABC Investigator, uh, Task Force Officer for Homeland Security Investigations, Patrol Sergeant, as well as Sergeant over Narcotics and CIB. He has played an integral role in the special response team for the past thirteen years and has served as an operator, assistant team leader, as well as team leader. Sergeant Feige has received his intermediate and advanced law enforcement certificates through the North Carolina, uh, Training and Standards Commission. He has been married for tw- for twenty years and has three children, two girls and a boy. He feels that he's truly blessed to work at the best police department in the state of North Carolina and for the town of Waxaw. He also feels that the officers he works beside every day, as well as the town employees, make this bigger than just a job, it's a family, and he's blessed to be a part of it. From the first time I met Mike Feige over fifteen years ago, I saw the motivation he has, had to be a law enforcement officer. He has shown over the years that his motivation is not wavered, he is not only a sergeant on patrol and a team leader on the special response team, but also a mentor to every police officer he works with. The town of Waxaw is blessed to have such a high caliber officer, thank you for your service.
Alright, thank you very much, what a great crew. Alright, uh, no presentations tonight, nothing on the public hearing items, we go to old business, and so if it wasn't the chief show, it's the Madison show tonight, so. Madison, first up, text amendment TA zero zero one two oh two three.
I guess they all weren't here for you, right? I guess not. Okay. Good afternoon everyone. So, tonight I have four text amendments, again, for you to consider for the decision on, and first off, we have the, uh, private sewer text amendment. So this is a petition by the town of Waxaw Planning Department to modify several chapters in our land development code to permit private water and sewer connections when Union County Public Works is unable to provide those public utilities. So, some of this, I'm gonna just fly through, and then just let me know if you need me to stop on anything specific, uh, but this is our current text in our, uh, chapter one, which requires public utility connection for water and sewer. And some of the text is the same, but in the bottom portion in green is all the new texts, um, so essentially when public connections cannot be made and the developer has provided that information to us, we can permit private connections for water and sewer, um, and then if a wastewater package plant is proposed, it must follow the special use permit and the special requirements outlined later in the presentation. So the bigger changes, chapter four, again with the wastewater package plants, um, so we have special requirements for these, and they are special uses amongst all zoning districts. Um, so the special requirements for a wastewater package plant, um, so again, it's only allowed by special use in all zoning districts, uh, screening standards shall follow the equipment and utility screening as outlined in chapter eight, um, and when abutting adjoining properties, we're going ahead and recommending a Class D buffer to be required to reduce those potential disturbances, and so off to the right, uh, I have shown the diagram of what a typical Class C versus Class D buffer looks like. Item D, uh, the wastewater package plant must follow all of NPDES, uh, which is part of the EPA or the, uh, DEQ requirements, uh, for wastewater package plants, and then item E outlines their maintenance, uh, and exercise of control within the homeowners association.
Let me drop back to that just a minute, so, it isn't always, it isn't going to be run by an HOA, it'll be run by a utility provider?
That is correct, yeah, so they'll have someone that will do the reporting and the inspections and the maintenance of that, uh, just the expense, uh, for paying for those will come out of the HOA.
Right. Commissioner Simpson?
And, and I know here it says HOA, but this can also be, uh, applied in commercial applications, just not residential, correct?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So as, as more commercial or light industrial wants to come into town, they can use this to supply that if it there, if public's water, um, wastewater's not able...
Yes, yeah, this is not specific just to residential, but to all development, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before we move, go ahead.
Okay. And then in our chapter thirteen, we're adding the definition of a wastewater package plant, again, this is a definition from the EPA. And so upon the adoption of the LDC and overseeing its implementation, the planning department proposes, uh, this change to allow private water and sewer connections, and so we recommend the adoption of this text amendment as presented. Uh, at the June Planning Board meeting, they recommended humanously approval to you all, and so tonight I request a motion to approve the petition and the consistency statement as presented. And, any questions?
Any questions for our presenter, Tracy?
So the, um, the buffer was changed from C to D from the last, um, from the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for doing that, I was gonna ask for that.
Absolutely.
The other question I have, and I know here it identifies package plants, but is there any language that talks about any future technology that could be available?
So...
And I know, and I know it just specifically says package plant, but...
Yeah, so we added the special use specific just for wastewater package plants, uh, just because of what they are as a utility, um, but we left it open-ended for private connections in a sense of, if there are future, uh, technologies that we're not aware of, or things that progress in a couple of years, if, if something like this, um, becomes more modernized, or something new comes out, so, um, so yeah, we left it open-ended to that, just for private connections in general.
Alright, anybody else, any questions? Alright, he's looking for a motion, so who's got the motion? Alright, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, thank you. Next one up, you again.
Shocker, uh, the second one is, we are doing updates to our screening standards in chapter eight, so this petition is a request by your planning department, and what we're doing is we're specifying screening standards, so we're creating a low screen and a high screen, um, and like I said, this update provides greater detail planting requirements. So right now, we, um, currently have screening standards that outline specific, uh, uses for the screen, so for dumpsters, or for mechanical equipment, or for off-street parking areas, without actually providing standards for, uh, applicants or developers to follow. So, we're taking this and we're changing the text to what is highlighted in green, so this is your low-screen requirement, uh, the intent is to screen vehicles but permit visibility for pedestrians, um, and so I can touch base on the, on the big items, so, uh, there's gonna be a minimum of one evergreen shrub planted every four feet, they may, may be planted in variety of placement, as long as they just meet that threshold, um, there's a certain height requirement, so must be a minimum of two feet in height, a minimum of two feet in spread when planted, and then reach a maximum, or reach a height of at least three feet, uh, but not exceeding four feet in height. Um, there's a two-feet separation to accommodate a vehicle bumper overhang, and then in lieu of this, they can do a low pedestrian wall of four feet, um, and then such screens are to be located out of the public right-of-way and then shall not interfere with a site triangle. So, our high screen, or what we're calling the equipment and utility screening, this is for your solid waste facilities, loading docks, uh, storage areas, mechanical equipment, um, so this is to, uh, provide a high screen to, to obscure these items from public view and view from neighboring properties, and what this does, it provides a minimum of one evergreen shrub planted, um, planted for every four feet of screening area length, uh, shrubs, again, can be placed at a, a different kind of, uh, let me catch it, uh, shrubs, they may vary in placement, as long as they meet the four-feet rule, uh, shrub planting shall be a minimum of three feet when planted, and then reach a maximum height, or a minimum height of eight feet, and then we're also requiring an opaque fence or wall to, uh, assist with the screening standard as well. So again, upon the adoption of the land development code and overseeing its implementation, the planning department, uh, proposes these screening standard updates to offer greater detail and clarification for screen requirements, so we recommend the adoption of this text amendment. At the June Planning Board meeting, the planning board unanimously recommended approval to you all, uh, with the notion that we update item B-four under the high-screen requirement, which we did. And then, so the requested action for tonight is a motion for approval and consistency statement as presented.
Alright, very good, any questions for our presenter? They've accommodated our requests, uh, all along this thing, it's been a long time in the making, so appreciate that, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve petition TA dash zero zero eight dash two zero two three and the consistency statement as presented. The text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxar is reasonable and in the public interest as the text amendment provides more detailed screening standards.
Very good, thank you, alright, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, any opposed? Alright, you're up again. Next one, item number three.
So this is a buffer and tree preservation update, um, so what this petition entails... Um, so what this petition entails amends Chapter 8.6 for the residential perimeter buffer and then 8.10 for the tree preservation. So what we're doing is updating the residential perimeter buffer to remain undisturbed during development, and then we're removing street trees and buffer trees from tree counts for tree preservation. So for Section 8.6, you can see the highlighted changes in green, and essentially, we're just adding, uh, undisturbed within all of our text to ensure that the 25-foot residential buffer remains undisturbed. And then we have language there, when current vegetation doesn't meet our buffer requirements, um, that we provide a standard for there, for them to follow. And then for the tree preservation section, uh, you can see the changes outlined in green again. So we remove the trees planted in buffer yards and as street trees to count towards the tree, uh, planting rates, so we're removing that essentially, um, from what an applicant or developer can count as tree save areas. And, uh, so the planning department proposes residential perimeter tree buffer and tree preservation update to strengthen our tree save and natural areas for proposed developments. Planning staff recommends the adoption of this text amendment. The June Planning Board meeting, the planning board recommended unanimously approval to you all tonight. And then so the action requested is a motion to approve the petition and consistency statement as presented.
Very good. Any questions on this one? We've been down this road for a long time already. Any questions? All right, who's gonna make the motion?
Motion to approve petition TA 006-2023 and the consistency statement, the text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the Town of Waxahaw is reasonable and in the public interest as the text amendment provides better tree save standards.
Very good, thank you. The motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, very good, thank you. Item number four.
Finally, the last text amendment from me tonight. This is our landscape architectural requirement, um, or certified arborist requirement. So this is a request by your planning department to amend Chapters 3 and Chapter 8 by requiring a landscape architect or certified arborist to sign and seal landscape tree preservation and open space sheets during construction document review. Uh, this update also requires a landscape architect or arborist to inspect planting stock and the installation during the site development. So Section 3 of, under a construction document plan review, we're simply adding the landscape architect or certified arborist to go along with what we require, uh, from a professional engineer, and they, uh, will seal and sign the landscape tree preservation open space And really, the text of that comes into Chapter 8.3 for the general requirements. And again, we're just requiring a, a landscape architect and arborist to certify these plans. And then when it comes to, uh, the actual site development, they will be required to inspect the quality of all planting stock and then inspect the installation of the planting stock. Uh, in doing so, they will provide an inspection verification letter to staff, and staff may conduct periodic inspections of the planting material and the installation process. Uh, so this is, again, just an example from our urban forester with the county. On the left, you can kinda see a perfect planting example where you can see the primary root. It's not covered with soil, not covered with, with mulch or pine straw. Um, the picture on the right, they had to dig substantially to, uh, not even find the primary root. Um, so what we're seeing mostly is, is what is illustrated on the right. Planting material planted too deep, uh, where the primary root eventually wraps around the trunk of the tree and strangles itself out, uh, unfortunately. So again, the planning department recommends the adoption of this text amendment to provide, uh, the requirements of a landscape architect and certified arborist. At the June Planning Board meeting, they recommended unanimously approval to you all. And a motion, uh, or requested action is a motion to approve the petition and consistency statement as presented, as presented, as I wrote twice.
All right, questions, comment? I have one to start off with. Could you, um, clarify or state?
Yes.
The application?
Yes.
Of this and how it applies to any property?
Absolutely, that's a great question. Um, so this would come into play for all of our major subdivisions or our commercial site plan review. Um, so if you think of, uh, of a large lot neighborhood or a large commercial parcel that comes in for development, um, so a, the difference between a major subdivision and a minor subdivision, um, so if it's nine lots or less, it's a minor subdivision. Um, so if someone owns a half-acre lot, they're just building a house, this requirement would, would not need to be followed. Uh, but if they're building, um, you know, a neighborhood of essentially 10 homes or greater, or they're doing a major subdivision process that comes to the board, they would be required to follow this. Yep.
And for clarification, for those who would be reading it or listening to this, do we have that in writing in another section? Or do we need to add that?
Yeah, so a minor subdivision, um, follows our minor subdivision process, which is outlined in the different chapter, in Chapter 5 subdivisions. Um, and so they're not required to go through a construction document review process as required by our ordinance, so we have that stated throughout our ordinance, um, and it would, it would be clear.
Okay. All right, that was my question. Anybody else? Any questions for our presenter? All right, he's looking for another motion. He wants to hit a home run today, so. Who's got the motion?
Motion to approve petition TA 003-2023 and the consistency statement, the text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the Town of Waxahaw is reasonable and in the public interest as the text amendment helps protect long-term growth and development of Waxahaw's tree population.
Very good, thank you, Tracy. That motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good work, guys, appreciate that. All right, next up, TA 04-2023. Blair.
Thank you, good evening everyone. Still on the subject of trees, uh, this text amendment will deal with trees, uh, and planting islands within parking lots. And, uh, this is all covered in, are all in Section 8.5 of the land development code. And, um, I will just go through them briefly. The first one has to do with the arrangement of parking islands. Right now, our requirement is, uh, meeting the 60-foot rule that no car spot would be further than 60 feet from a qualifying, um, parking lot tree. And what we're doing is bringing in, um, our former code, which also, or which required that, uh, you would have a planting island within every 10 spaces. And so we're combining the both of those. And what that does is that, uh, allows for breaking up of long rows of parking if it's right on, right on the edge, where you wouldn't need a parking island for the tree, you could just plant the tree on the edge. Uh, this would mean that you would still break it up visually with those, with those islands. So that is, um, 8.5A. And then jumping down to 8.5C, as you can see in red there, uh, what we're doing is effectively doubling the amount of island area for the planting, particularly for, uh, the trees' sake. Right now, the requirement is just the space of one parking space, the area of one parking space, which is really insufficient for the health of the tree. We're, if, we're doubling that for two parking spaces, which is already common practice in a lot of development, and Kuratin being one example, where you see islands that are the equivalent of two spaces, the trees are doing very well there. We just looked at them today, as a matter of fact, and provide room for some other planting as well. But it increases the area, but what we're also doing is requiring treated soil, um, to a three-foot depth, because oftentimes, without that requirement, oftentimes, what happens is that the trees get planted in just the fill dirt and, which is often just red clay, and the tree doesn't stand a chance. So we're requiring that, as you can see in the, in the bold print there. Um, so that makes for a total of 840 cubic feet per tree of good soil. That gives them a great chance to, to thrive. In the following paragraph, A5D, um, we're also doing something similar in the medians that would be within parking, large parking lots, and this all has to do with parking lots that are gonna be over 10 spaces, larger parking lots of shopping centers, for instance. And so in medians, we're also requiring that greater depth and treatment of the soil, um, still giving them, uh, giving the trees more room to grow. Same principle, but just applied in the median. And then finally, um, we're suggesting the adding of, uh, another paragraph to Section 8.5. And this is, uh, not so much a rule, but an encouragement, a writing out of, uh, direction to developers to utilize what's called green infrastructure. And, uh, just to explain briefly, green infrastructure employs planting soils and other natural means to filter, treat, and slowly release stormwater without as much reliance on large detention ponds and, and piping and such. And the reason this is needed, um, or suggested is, for one, the runoff from parking lots is very polluted. We don't want it go, going directly into our streams, because think about what's coming off of the cars, grease and gas and, and other elements that, that fall in, and what these, what these green islands will do, they're very much like a regular parking island, but they allow, instead of repelling the water with a, with a curb, they allow the water to enter into the island, sit amongst the, the planting there that's specially selected to, to filter that, filter those pollutants and slowly let the water evaporate, so there's not as much runoff and it's not as polluted. So that's, that's what this full statement is about. So, uh, the planning board reviewed the text amendment, that was back in June 20th, and unanimously, unanimously recommended the approval. Uh, and here we can see the consistency and reasonable statement. Uh, I'll just, let you read it there. Um, and what we're asking is a motion to approve the text amendment petition. Uh, and this is TA 04-2023, and the reasonable, reasonableness and consistency statement as presented, I'll go back to that slide so you can see it. And here to ask, answer questions or elaborate.
Tracy?
I have one question. I remember during the public hearing, you said that the county forestry.
Urban, urban forester.
Urban forester, yeah. Um, recommended the three parking spaces, but was that mainly to put in more soil or was it for larger shade trees or what was his, why would he prefer that?
Well, I mean, he's gonna prefer, he, he, in a longer statement that he gave to us, I mean, he was saying, hey, if you can get the area of four parking spaces, that's even better. Um, but he understands that that's not always possible. Yes, the bigger the parking, the, the bigger the area for the tree, the better it's going to do by and large. Um, there's just no doubt about that. But what we're trying to do is create a minimum. Uh, we can certainly look at, I mean, we do look at each, each, uh, development that's, um, proposed, and we look for ways to, to better the, the environment for the trees and for the greens and, you know, just to make it a, a better development in many ways. But if there are opportunities, we will certainly look for those. But we didn't feel that at this point, it was wise to require, you know, three or four parking spaces. It's far outside the norm. Uh, the two parking spaces is usually the norm. I would say, though, that in opportunities where they are going to use green infrastructure, that would definitely be a point of discussion, that, you know, if this is going to work really well, let's make these parking islands larger and make it really work. And a lot of times, in that green infrastructure, just getting off your question for a second, a lot of times, that's sort of put on one side of the parking lot, and the whole parking lot kinda, uh, slopes to it, and it's all treated on one side, and it can be very beautiful. But, um, the bigger the better, but yeah, we wanted to have a reasonable minimum.
Cause I didn't know if that meant we could do larger shade trees if, if we did, more parking spaces and to cool down the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Cause as, you know, from the heat map that he showed us, that, uh, the parking lots generate so much heat and having more shade trees is something better, but.
Well, we would like to move more in that direction. There's, there's no doubt about it. Uh, we felt that this was as far as we could go at this point. But in a, in a, um, planting island that is the equivalent of, that has 840 cubic feet of, of, of good soil, you could plant a large maturing tree, and it would do, it would do well. I mean, if it's taken care of. So I don't think we're limiting the species, uh, selection. Um, there are some that we're going to think are more favorable in parking lots that just do better in that kind of harsh environment, cause it's harsh for the tree, getting all that reflected heat and such. But, um, I don't think that that, that area's gonna limit us for tree selection. But hopefully, we'll be back, you know, in another year or two and say, hey, you know what, we're ready to take it even further, green infrastructure has become more acceptable. We're seeing a, a trend towards, um, those development practices that favor, um, trees and such, so we would like to get there. We just don't feel like we're there yet. So we're suggesting two spaces, which is a standard. Maybe someday, yeah, we could, we could get bigger.
You could always do more than the standard.
I know.
And I always, well, I think, you know, the bigger part of this, or another part of this, is we have, uh, provided the, the conditions with the over excavation of that area with good soil versus you could have three parking spaces with bad soil.
Absolutely, yeah, it's much better to have the three feet of depth of, of treated soil. That's a big plus.
That's a big plus. It'll give us, I think, the canopy, and I think, I think you're right, I think Kuratin's a good starting example for us to watch. And then if we have some, you know, if it doesn't work, and if we don't get the canopy and the things that we're looking for, then we could adjust, but I think, I think it's gonna be really important to have that good soil underneath it there. That 800 cubic feet plus is a big deal.
And perhaps one thing that will affect some, some future ordinance changes would be reducing the, the amount of required parking. We'd like to, we'd like to tackle that soon and have less parking.
Glad you brought that up, because I, I remember, I think from the public hearing, the mayor had mentioned about is, do we have an ordinance that requires a certain size building to have so many spots? Like, cause I think you brought up like the Lowe's parking, and it's never 100% at capacity.
No, that's true.
That's what he was just addressing there.
In the current code, you would determine the number, the minimum number of parking spaces based on the use and square footage of that, of that use in the building. So that's how it's typically calculated. Ideally, we'd wanna remove, um, parking minimums and instead put in parking maximums, that you can have no more parking than this amount. So we're, we're looking at text changes like that, and hopefully, we'll bring you something soon.
That's great. All right, any other thoughts, comments? All right, Mr. Blair is looking for a motion to follow up on his associate. All right, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve TA-04-2023 and consistency statement. The text amendment request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals for the Town of Waxahaw, and is reasonable and in the public interest as it will promote tree health and improve shading within parking areas and provide for better stormwater management.
Nice, thank you. All right, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, thank you. Congratulations, nice work on that as well. Thank you. All right, next up, we have new business major subdivision right-of-way plat. We have Lisa Thompson, Planning and Inspections Director. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here to present a right-of-way plat. Just one second. All right, to give you a little history, uh, Mauvi, Waxahaw, um, was a development plan that was approved back in October of 2022. The approval was conditioned upon Sunset Hill Road being publicly dedicated for connectivity from Cuthbertson Road to the signal at NC 16 and Sunset Hill Road. Um, so on this map to the right, you have Cuthbertson Road running east-west, this is Providence Road running north-south, and then the signal at Sunset Hill is existing at this current location. We received that right-of-way plat a few weeks ago. It looked simple and easy, but it did take a lot of effort and coordination from several, um, groups. It is a very important connection in that area. Um, the dedication of right-of-way is considered a major subdivision, so it has to go through the planning board and board of commissioners process. Uh, we brought it to the planning board on July 18th, they unanimously recommended approval, so we're looking for, um, a motion to approve. It's subdivision petition 014-937-2023 as presented.
Any questions, comments? Jeff?
Can I make one? I just wanna reiterate how big of a important subdivision plat this is. That's a real game changer for the intersection there of NC 16 and Cuthbertson Road. It'll provide another avenue for people to get around that busy intersection, so this is, this is a big one.
This is huge, and it is, you know, inch by inch, as we, uh, manage the town and the infrastructure, to get another puzzle piece in place is a big deal. You know, it will take, it will take a lot of the pressure off the intersection. It will take, it will take a lot of the pressure off the intersection of sixteen there, so, um, nice to see.
Lisa, could, could you just go back a couple of slides to the Mavi? And I, and I think, I mean, I've kind of worked on this whole Cuthbertson Road initiative and getting people together to talk about the traffic and the congestion on Cuthbertson Road and the safety with the school. And I remember when a Mavi came, I believe that this roadway and connection will actually alleviate the traffic at that intersection and improve the flow by like thirty percent. So by keeping it moving, it will help from the Cuthbertson Road from clogging up by keeping the flow going at, at that particular end. So I think this is really a big, huge for our citizens and for the safety of anyone traveling Cuthbertson Road back and forth to school.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you. Any other thoughts, comments?
I had a, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Sidewalks, will it be continuous from sixteen all the way through the entire area?
Yes, we actually had a resident reach out and ask the question, is the right of way wide enough to allow for sidewalks? It is, well, they'll have to bring it up to a public road standard, which includes sidewalks. Um, so there's an existing sidewalk on the north side along Aldi. Um, that'll connect all the way to this development, kind of throughout the area.
And are we leaving, uh, space for future connectivity there at that intersection? Where it would go into the development?
Yes, sir, they're coordinating.
Thank you.
All right, any other thoughts, questions, comments? All right, looking for a motion on this one as well.
I'll make a motion to approve petition SUB zero one four nine three seven dash two zero two three as presented.
Yeah, the consistency.
Oh, is there one?
No, not on that, oh, not that one, wrong one. All right, we're good. All right, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number two, the Waxahaw Parkway extension. So Mr. Kelly, James Kelly, welcome.
Good evening. So before I jump into tonight's presentation on the Waxahaw Parkway, just kind of want to briefly describe why it's important to Waxahaw. And we recently conducted a survey, um, coordinated with Union County as part of the critical intersection improvements, which I'll talk about in another presentation this evening. But people told us in that survey why, what matters to them as far as traffic. The number one thing that we got back with fifty-seven percent of people responding, and granted, this is out of three thousand people responding to the survey, the number one thing is reducing congestion. So the Waxahaw Parkway, as far as local impacts, will help to aid in alleviating congestion at the intersection of NC sixteen and NC seventy-five, which is Brim Street and South Main, right in the heart of downtown. In addition, it'll also provide, uh, alleviation as far as regional traffic impacts by providing a primary north-south route connection around downtown. This will ultimately help to maintain our small town feel, feel by bypassing, by allowing a bypass for this regional traffic and keeping our local traffic downtown. The second thing that people responded in the survey, um, with twenty-nine percent was increasing safety. So by reducing this overall congestion, we are increasing overall safety. Congestion at NC sixteen and NC seventy-five leads to traffic buildup and queuing there that you all have seen. This results in sight distance issues at cross streets such as Howie Mine and Price. So this vehicular queuing makes it difficult for drivers to make a left turn safely. The Waxahaw Parkway will help to reduce this congestion along Brim Street and increase overall safety. In addition, by reducing congestion, we can provide faster emergency response times. This will further support our fire and police units. So as of right now, since we don't have the Parkway, if a two mile long train comes into town, we are essentially stuck. We cannot go across NC seventy-five. But with the Parkway, it'll provide an alternative route for fire and police to get across and access NC seventy-five in a quicker response manner. Speaking of the railroad, we have also had four incidents of larger vehicles getting stuck on the tracks in the last two months alone, which is a safety issue itself. So how are CSX and NC, and NC DOT responding? Well, essentially, we have to ask what would happen if a vehicle got stuck on the tracks at the wrong time? In essence, we have to solve our own problems and gain support from all stakeholders to achieve construction of the Waxahaw Parkway, which will help to alleviate these safety concerns. In addition, Waxahaw Parkway would provide an alternative route for these larger vehicles to travel and entirely avoid railroad conflicts with a bridge overpass on NC seventy-five. The third and final most important thing that people identified within the survey was advancing bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, coming in at an approximate eleven percent. Waxahaw Parkway includes a ten-foot multi-use path that will accommodate bicycle, pedestrian, and other multimodal considerations. In addition, by reducing congestion in our downtown area with the Waxahaw Parkway, we will also increase overall pedestrian safety downtown. So these three things, reducing congestion at fifty-seven percent, response, increasing safety at twenty-nine percent, and advancing bicycle and pedestrian accommodations at eleven percent are the three most important things that people care about when it comes to, um, alleviating traffic. And that is what this Waxahaw Parkway will do. Now, there's another three percent of responses to get us to the total of one hundred. And these are just miscellaneous categories such as improving economic development. So the big question as we move throughout this presentation that we're asking people to think about is what can we do to help you get on board to support the Waxahaw Parkway extension? So let's dive a little bit deeper into it. We're gonna talk, define a few terms as we move throughout this presentation. So the comprehensive transportation plan, the CTP, represents the community's long-term transportation vision, and it describes how a local transportation network should evolve to serve residents and employers in a growing region. It also provides the framework for transportation planning at a local and regional scale. It additionally assesses the condition of the entire transportation network and includes multiple modes of transportation ranging, but not limited to highways and new roadways, pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, public transportation and rail. It does not include specific transportation projects or improvement schedules, but more so rather represents the status or completeness of the comprehensive transportation system that may be required to support anticipated growth and development. The CTP is required for all parts of North Carolina by general statute. It is governed by the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, CRTPO, as CRTPO is the designated metropolitan planning organization, the MPO for the area. Amendments and updates, which this is, are approved by both CRTPO and the North Carolina Department of Transportation, but essentially we have a big part to play because these are really based on locally adopted plans as local jurisdictions can implement improvements through local ordinance or capital improvement projects. So how does the CTP impact future transportation plans and projects? Like I said before, it serves as the framework for selecting future transportation projects for the MTP. The MTP, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, identifies transportation projects prioritized for funding over the next twenty years. So once projects are in the MTP, projects are then selected to be placed in the Transportation Investment Program, the TIP, that NC DOT uses to program projects for construction. In essence, the CTP is your vision, what you, you want. The MTP is your prioritization, and the TIP is really your construction and implementation. So here is the proposed amendment for the northeast section. So this is based on a twenty twenty-two feasibility study conducted by NC DOT. We are proposing to shift the existing CTP alignment, shown in orange over there to the right, to the new alignment in purple. This really requires coordination with CRTPO, NC DOT, and surrounding municipalities such as Mineral Springs and Union County. The southeast proposed amendment is just a continuation, so we are providing that north-south connection, which is vital to both our local impacts as well as regional traffic impacts. The vision is to continue the corridor south of NC seventy-five to connect to Old Waxahaw Monroe Road. We're shifting the existing CTP alignment, again, shown in orange over there to the right, to the new alignment on the left, shown in green. This is really based on an origin destination study that showed the need for a north-south corridor. And this, like I've said before, is vital to alleviating the regional choke point at NC seventy-five and NC sixteen. So to provide some historical context, this is nothing new. This was actually first started back in nineteen ninety-two. And before it was the CTP, it was referred to as the thoroughfare plan. So this corridor has changed multiple times and, uh, local level adoptions to support right of way dedications as part of rezonings have been incorporated as well. In essence, really this, the why this new alignment is a little bit better than the old alignment is because it has less impacts to property owners and it actually does no, does no longer impact subdivisions such as the Old Stone Forest Drive. The previous, the previous amendment actually went through Old Stone Forest Drive subdivision and Scott Lane. So this, this new alignment will help to decrease overall property impacts. So to kind of give you a timeline of what, what we've done, where we are, and what is to come. Back in April, this board passed a resolution to authorize starting the CTP amendment process. This was not an endorsement, um, of the new alignment. It was just really to get the process moving forward. In May, staff presented at a Wednesday CRTPO transportation staff meeting to prepare for the June TCC, the Technical Coordinating Committee, um, board agendas. In June, we went to CRTPO and TCC for presentations on information, for informational purposes. July, which is now, the CT, uh, the CRTPO, um, just recently passed an, an action to open up a public comment period that will go from July twentieth through August twentieth. This public, and we're, in addition to that, the town of Waxahaw will be holding a public meeting that will be, be hosted here, um, within the community room on August third from six thirty PM to eight PM to help give people, um, some more information as it relates to the Parkway. In addition, we are also mailing out to all affected properties within three hundred feet of the corridor and coordinating with other municipalities. In September, assuming we have positive public input, we will be looking at a resolution endorsing the new proposed alignment. Once we get through that process, we'll go back to CRTPO, TCC, for informational purpose. And November, we will be looking at CRTPO and TCC action. So here's the link to that survey. I'm gonna help you, I'm gonna walk you through it as well. So that survey link there is shown at the bottom. It takes about maybe five minutes, no more than five minutes to complete. The public comment period is now open, started at July twentieth. It'll go through August twentieth. Again, we'll be hosting that public meeting here, um, on August third from six thirty PM to eight o'clock PM where people can drop in, come speak with staff from Waxahaw, from Union County, from Mineral Springs, ask any questions that you may have, kind of talk through the, um, the changes, and then also be able to provide public comment at that location, uh, in time as well. So just to kind of skim through it real quick, um, basically the, the survey asks you a few questions, such as the first thing, is the proposed new route an improvement? And do you have any specific comments about the current or proposed alignments? So this kind of gives people a quick option to strongly agree or strongly disagree, however they feel, and then also provide any public input comments that they have. They can type that out on the survey. In addition to that, it asks a few more questions, such as, do you want the Waxahaw Parkway to be built? And then it, uh, can continues to ask about property impacts and municipality impacts. So one of the key questions is, do you own property that is directly affected by the Waxahaw Parkway? And which municipality do you live in? Cause we're curious to see where people are responding from within the survey. Are they within Waxahaw? Are they within Mineral Springs, Union County, et cetera? And then finally, there's just some demographic information as well as an option to provide, uh, contact. So as a part of this survey, you can provide your email address and be updated, uh, as we move throughout the process. So at this current time, there is no requested action. Staff will continue working toward compiling public input throughout this public comment period. And assuming we have positive public input, a local resolution supporting the CTP amendments will be requested in September. With that, do you have any questions?
Any questions, thoughts, and comments? Nineteen ninety-two.
Nineteen ninety-two was the very beginning.
I think we're a little slow.
In the beginning, it, it, it was talked about, and I guess over the years, there have been fine tuning. And now all of a sudden, we're, we're getting this ball rolling?
We are. We're finally getting to the point where we are seeing good positive impacts, um, and input from the public. And we're hoping to continue to see that as we move throughout this survey and as we compile the data. One of the key things why the last, um, alignment wasn't successful was because it impacted subdivisions within Mineral Springs. We have moved those away from Mineral Springs. This new alignment is no longer impacting those subdivisions.
I just hope there's a comment section. One of the questions was, do you think we should have it? And I know there'll be some folks that'll go out there and just, you know, click no because, you know. And I hope that there's, uh, enough input from folks that are gonna read this and look at it and think about it and put a solution if you're so, you know, inclined to put no.
I agree. So as far as public input, really, why, why is this Parkway important? Well, the people, based upon their surveys, the three thousand surveys that we've analyzed before as a part of the critical intersection program, this is what they told us that they wanted. They want to reduce congestion, they want to increase safety, and they want to advance pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. So this, this option will give that to them and I hope that they can support it.
And we get one three thousand.
Exactly.
Just, just something else, but so this is the Parkway, this is just more the east side because if we look at the Parkway, it, it kind of makes a, a circle around, around the downtown. So I think us as a board, we have worked very hard at trying to make connections, um, in the different quadrants, per se. So I think a lot of this is just that kind of northeast quadrant. And the alignment work would go south, but we do have secured some of the attachments in the southeast quadrant.
That is correct.
That will be paid for and built by development.
Correct.
Any other thoughts? This, um, nineteen ninety-two is a very interesting date to look at. And it's one of the things that we, as a board together, decided to tackle, uh, early on in our service to the town. As a mayor, I get to sit on that board, um, by just, my position as mayor. And for the last two terms, I've been chairman of the CRTPO. And we've pushed this forward to try to get collaboration, cooperation with our surrounding neighbors. Mineral Springs has publicly endorsed this alignment location right now. That's a good sign. We're looking to keep it moving. It is very necessary to your point about a pinch point downtown. Downtown would only get more miserable if this doesn't happen. So we certainly would encourage people to get involved, understand the whys and the hows and how this is gonna be put together. It most likely won't happen tomorrow, but if we can move it along, at least it'll get a solid placeholder. So for future boards, uh, if it isn't us this time around, it's going to be an impact to them and an advantage to them that will have done the homework to, to get this thing aligned. Nineteen ninety-two, that's a long time. It's all right.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other comments for our presenter? Very good. James, thank you very much and keep us posted on that. The, uh, end of the public comment period is August twentieth and then it'll move back and forth between us and CARPO and.
That is correct.
CTP. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move over to, uh, item number three on new business. We got the consideration of the contract award for Waxahaw, the asphalt repair. So you again.
So this is a presentation involving the twenty twenty-three Waxahaw Asphalt Repair Contract. On, on July twentieth, um, we had an informal bid opening that was held for the twenty twenty-three asphalt repair resurfacing contract, which includes, but is not limited to asphalt milling, patching, and paving, minor roadway shoulder construction, and traffic control as necessary to complete the work. We received four bids with troll contracting coming in as the lowest responsible bidder at a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty US dollars. So town staff has reviewed the bids for completeness and recommend the, uh, award of the contract to troll contracting. General locations to be resurfaced and repaired include Alma Village, Camberly, Lawson, Old Hickory, Park, Providence, Prescott, and more. So notifications will be provided as we move along to the impacted residents prior to street paving operations beginning. Next steps, the project has a floating availability date between August seventh and August fifteenth. What that means is just kind of gives the contract a little bit more flexibility as far as when they want to start. But as soon as they select that date, the contract period will then extend, um, sixty days after that date. So they must complete the work within sixty days from starting. So they must complete the work within 60 days from starting between that August 7th and August 15th date. Upon execution, the contractor will be able to order materials and coordinate with their subcontractors. Again, that completion date is set 60 days after the selection of the floating availability. A pre-construction meeting will be held to coordinate scheduling of all construction activity, and important details of the project will be provided regularly to the BOC and to the public.
All right. Any questions up for our presenter? We're going to have two motions here then, won't we? So questions, comments?
Maybe just one, just one comment that we're providing notifications to the impacted residents, but will we be notifying the respective HOAs of these neighborhoods as well?
We will, yes. So that'll be a part of the notification.
Right, okay. Yeah, because I'm sure the equipment and stuff is going to be more disruptive than just those residents.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? All right, we're going to look for two motions on this one. The first one will be the motion to award the contract. So have a motion, please?
Motion to award the Waxall 2023 Asphalt Repair Contract to Troll Contracting in the amount of $197,150 and to authorize the town manager to execute the contract.
All right, very good. That motion's up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, thank you. All right, next motion up. I'm sorry, I'm down one. Never mind.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Orion, welcome. This one's a contract, another contract to Naciri Development for the downtown park off-site roadway improvements. So floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. On July 11th, oh, it's not up yet. Next slide, please. Do I do it?
Yep, that's yours. There you go.
On July 11th, 2023, a formal bid opening was held for the downtown park off-site improvements projects. This include asphalt paving, concrete curb and gutter sidewalks, stormwater improvements, grading erosion control, miscellaneous site improvements. The town received four bids with Naciri Development coming in as the lowest responsible bidder at $861,546.50. The town has reviewed the bids for completeness and recommend award of the contract to Naciri Development. Staff is requesting a budget amendment, BA 24-001, to add funds to the downtown park off-site improvement projects fund in an amount of $255,000. Project availability date, availability date will be July 26, 2023, or upon written notice to proceed. The contract period will extend 60 days to September 24th. That's assuming that we do the notice to proceed tomorrow. That'll be the 60 days. Upon execution, the contractor will be able to order materials and coordinate with their subcontractors. Completion date is set 60 days from availability notice to proceed. Pre-construction meeting will be held to coordinate scheduling of all construction activities. Important details of the project will be provided regularly to the BOC and public. The project schedule is intended to install sidewalk and roadway improvements to the area between downtown and new, and the new park in time for the grand opening of Autumn Treasures on October 24th. Failure to immediately award the bid may result in construction days which would negatively be, impact the timeline for the Autumn Treasures Festival. Board action for this, that we have the motion to award the downtown park off-site roadway improvements contract to Naciri Development in the amount of $861,546.50 and authorize the town manager to execute that contract. And the second motion to approve budget amendment BA 24-001 to add funds to the downtown park off-site road improvements fund, project fund in the amount of $255,000. Are there any questions?
Questions? Could you describe for everybody the locations of these improvements specifically unless you've got a map there or something?
No, I don't. So this would be the Church Street extending from Caldwell down to the, to the park, to Givens, and then also Broad Street from, from Main down to Givens, the improvements.
So this is
And then on Givens as well.
On Givens. So this will be from basically the skate park
Correct.
All the way down and around.
Almost like an opposite J.
Right. An opposite J in there, and then along Broad, is it? No?
Correct.
Is it Broad?
Broad, yes.
So that entire length, which is lengthy, that's
Correct.
A good quarter mile or so. Okay. Does everybody understand the locations? All right. So this with the mic out of my face here, and I can actually see this, this will require two actions. So unless there's any other questions and comments and thoughts, I'm looking for a motion for the first part.
Motion to award the downtown park off-site roadway improvements contract to Naciri Development in the amount of $861,546.50 and authorize the town manager to execute the contract.
All right. That motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. All right, thank you. Second motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment BA 24001 to add funds to the downtown park off-site roadway improvements project fund in the amount of $255,000.
Very good. That motion is up as well. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. Thank you. Appreciate that. Orion, thank you. We look forward to getting that done in a timely manner.
Yes.
It'd be great. All right, next up, Critical Intersection Analysis Update. Mr. James, you're up again. This is informational?
This is informational.
Great, thank you.
So this was the survey, the Critical Intersection Analysis was the survey that I was talking before within the Waxall Parkway Amendment Process. But really, this, this survey was conducted across the entire Union County with all municipalities represented. So throughout this presentation, I'm just going to provide you with a program overview, the process timeline, where we've been, where we are, and where we're going, the data collection process, the public engagement process, as well as the recommended top 15 intersections. One crucial thing to note here with these recommended top 15 intersections is that it's intersections that currently do not have proposed improvements planned. So we have a lot of intersections across Waxall that currently have a lot of intersections planned, but really, this is more so for intersections across Union County that need improvements that aren't currently planned for those improvements. And then as well, we'll talk about some applications specifically for Waxall. So the Critical Intersection Program, the main purpose was to seek input from our residents to help in the prioritization of future intersection improvements across the town of Waxall and across the entire Union County. Waxall partnered with Union County CRTPO and CDOT and other local municipalities to support data collection and public outreach efforts. We had a survey that closed on May 5th, and I'm going to provide you with some of that data from that survey. But before we get there, the overall process timeline in January was the main kickoff and the process confirmation. February was where all the stakeholders got together to identify some preliminary projects. And in March, we started the development, the develop ranking process, which was just a, the same plan as the previous years. And then April to May, we, we reached out through via MetraQuest, through public outreach and collected some data, got some data from NC DOT. June, July, which is where we are now, where we've prioritized that list. In August, we will have a presentation from Union County Representative Bjorn Hansen. He will come here to Waxall to present the overall findings as far as the final, the final results. But this should help us just get a little bit closer to understand where those results currently are. August through September, Union County will be seeking adoption of the Critical Intersection Program. So data collection, we utilize crash history and traffic count data to properly assess the candidate intersections. NC DOT provided the five-year crash histories, which we analyzed, and CRTPO provided the use of the MetraQuest online public engagement tool. Through this public engagement tool, MetraQuest, we conducted a public in period, a public input period from April to May. Nearly 3,000 people responded and participated within the survey, which is an excellent turnout from public engagement. So public input was valuable as this helped to formulate the top 15 critical intersections. Now, as a part of that, nearly 3,000 responses, we had over 4,000 comments on currently funded projects with 87% of people supporting those currently funded projects throughout Union County as well as within Waxall. We had over 5,500 comments on suggested new projects where the public identified congestion, safety, bicycle and pedestrians concerns, which we talked about are the three primary concerns that people have when it comes to traffic impacts. We want to reduce congestion, increase safety, and advance our bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. So responses by municipalities, Waxall came in as number one as far as overall public input and comments provided. So that was really good to see. We had a lot, we had a huge successful public engagement period, and we had a lot of good responses from Waxall. The intersection scoring matrix, so this was the same one that we used, that committee, we just, we basically just kept the same scoring matrix unchanged after reviewing public impacts. But what it consists of is crash history data, traffic count data, general congestion, safety, mobility type concerns. And we use this to score projects for the inclusion within the top 15 critical intersection list. So here are the Union County's recommended top 15 intersections. So again, this is not just within Waxall, this is across the entire Union County. And these are primarily for intersections that do not currently have any improvements planned. So in Waxall, we already have several improvements planned for different intersections. But one of the key intersections that made the top 15 list, as far as Waxall is concerned, is Cuthbertson Road along Lawson, between Lawson, Bro Hall, Five Forks, and Lightwood Drive. That area there made the top 15 recommended list. So what are we going to do with that? So as part of that public support and public engagement, we were able to make this a part of the top 15 critical intersection list. And now we're going to talk about future applications. So Cuthbertson, Bro Hall Drive, we currently are already working on a rectangular rapid flashing beacon or an RRFB, which is just a high-visibility crosswalk. The contractor is expected to start construction July 31st, so next Monday, on this RRFB at Cuthbertson and Bro Hall Drive. This will, and then it'll, expected completion is the week of August 21st. So before school, we will have this installed and operational. And then we'll also request support from our police department as far as making people aware of the new changes. And then we would like to also request to have an officer present at least for the first week prior to the start of school, and then for a week after school to assist at the crossing. The crossing additionally includes a pedestrian refuge island as well as push-button actuated beacons with advanced warning signage. And again, we will aim to have that operational before the start of school, really a week before the start of school. In addition to that, so we have Cuthbertson and Lawson Drive. The vision at this intersection is to provide traffic signalization as part of the improvements. We're currently in the process of obtaining NC DOT stakeholder collaboration, and we're having further discussions with NC DOT later this fall. NC DOT has requested to collect traffic counts, most likely after Labor Day is when they'll collect it. So we're looking at mid-September when they'll collect those counts, and then we'll have further discussions to support the need for traffic signalization at Cuthbertson and Lawson Drive. In addition to that, Cuthbertson and Five Forks Roads, there's an existing pedestrian connection there at Five Forksroads, but it stops right at the Waxall City Limit or the Town Limit sign. So we're going to continue this pedestrian connection from Five Forks Road to the Southwest Regional Library, and then provide further pedestrian connection to Cuthbertson Middle and High Schools. So students will be able to, if they live in those neighborhoods on, on Lawson, they'll be able to walk from Lawson to school. And we're providing a safe route for them to walk to school. So board action, again, no requested action at this current point in time. Staff will continue working with other municipalities and organizations to finalize the Union County Critical Intersection Program. And then again, Union County Representative Bjorn Hansen will present the final results to the Waxall BOC on August 22nd. So that's when we can expect Bjorn. And then on August 22nd, Bjorn will request a resolution from Waxall BOC endorsing the top 15 intersection list. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions, comment? Commissioner Simpson, I see your hand going there.
Thanks, James. So having been a big champion on, on the traffic on, on Cuthbertson Road, and I know the ones here at Lawson scored high, but something else that I noticed is on the top 15 intersection is Newtown and Cuthbertson is really kind of high up there on the list.
It is.
So, and I know that that is also another bottleneck to keep the traffic flowing with the congestion on Cuthbertson Road with the schools. And it's my understanding that the David Weekly Development is supposed to be making some improvements while there's a bigger study as what this may indicate.
So that's correct. So developer improvements at Cuthbertson and Newtown Road consist of a dedicated left turn lane as well as a dedicated right turn lane. So NC DOT should have finished the engineering review of those improvements. So we can expect, hopefully, within a reasonable time, that the developer will install those improvements for the left turn and right turn lanes. As far as future, there are future plans and planning involving further increasing safety at that intersection.
And, and I think you might have mentioned earlier that those improvements will need to be made. There's a bond on that, so they're required to make that?
That's correct. So NC DOT typically holds a bond on any developer roadway improvements on state-maintained roadways. So in effect, if the developer did not make those installations per DOT's requirements, DOT could use that bond to support a project to build those improvements, roadway improvements.
So just so I understand, so David Weekly was required to put a bond up that if they don't go through and make those improvements, that the state would take that money and could potentially do it for themselves?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments, thoughts? I have a little bit on that to add to it. I think it's interesting that we've talked about several times over the last few months about process. Everything in government is a process. Takes a long time to go through, a lot of effort, a lot of collaboration between a lot of parties. And I know the two commissioners that live in the Lawson neighborhood have really lobbied for this for the past couple, three years to get this done, and we all do. I think there are some in our communities that think that we are not transparent enough, but don't know how more transparent you can be than involving the public and making these presentations as well, to have input from the public as well. So nothing is done in a vacuum. We don't get together over coffee just to do this stuff. And so I think it's important to note that, you know, we're moving through things. It takes a long time to do, but look at all the people that we've involved in this now, cooperation from Union County as well. So I think it's important to note.
All righty, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, we have zero on closed session, so we're going to go over to the town leadership reports. First one, Uptown Manager Jeffrey Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, I, I just want to say how proud I am of, of everybody, and particularly with this Cuthbertson Road and, and the CIP project that we're about to move forward with that James mentioned, the crosswalk and, and rapid beacon project. I mean, as, as far as, as local government time, as, as you say, it mentioned, that's about as fast as it can get. And I'm just really excited that we're going to have that up and operational by the beginning of this school year, which is just approximately a, a month away. So it's just really, really a stellar effort by everybody involved, the decision makers and everybody that's implementing that. So I just want to mention that. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. If that's what you have for tonight, we're good? All right. So next up, Police Chief Dexter Wilson. Come on back up.
Thank you. So everybody knows National Night is coming up, August 1st. We have six neighborhoods at this time participating. Every officer that's on patrol is assigned a neighborhood, and they've worked very diligently with all the neighborhoods to try to find out if they're interested, as well as putting together stuff for the events. So it turns out Lawson, Curriton, Quaylen, Anklan Forest, Mill Bridge, and Howey Mine Road are all participating this year, which is great. It's a lot of neighborhoods. Next year, we want to kind of change things up a little bit, and we want to hold it at the police department with each neighborhood contributing, and everybody would come here so we could do the open house and the National Night at the same time. I think that would be really great for us and the community. We'll have a caravan patrolling through the subdivisions. So the first neighborhood we'll go through is Lawson, arrival time at 5:15 PM. And then the next one is Curriton, will be there by 5:45 PM. Quaylen will be there by 6:15 PM. Anklan Forest will be there by 8:40, or excuse me, 6:45 PM. Mill Bridge at 7:15 PM, and then Howey Mine at 7:45 PM. Millbridge at seven fifteen PM and then Howey Mine at seven forty-five PM. That will be, that caravan will be myself as well as, as Brad Cohen. We'll have a K nine in the caravan, caravan as well, SRT members, explorers, and the deer unit. So pretty excited about that. I think it's going to be a very good night and a lot of fun. Next, we have last month, there were numerous car break-ins in Walnut Creek, which is, is right beside Millbridge on the South Carolina side. Stolen vehicle was recovered in Millbridge, but no cars broken in, in Millbridge. So I got to give a shout out to the residents of Millbridge, locking your cars, you know, no reports there, so that's great. Lieutenant Cohen and I attended the Police Execs Conference, July fifteenth through the nineteenth. We learned a lot. It was a great conference. Lieutenant Zill is now heading up our community policing program as the community services lieutenant and is doing a great job so far. Between him and Sergeant Hutton, they've done a lot already and they're going to continue to do a lot, so I'm pretty excited about that program. Any questions?
Any questions, thoughts, comments? Jump right in.
Thank you.
Exactly. Appreciate that. All right, next up, Planning and Inspections Director Lisa Thompson.
Hello. One update, the Adelina project, it's four hundred and eighty-six units. It's a mixed-use development north of the Bojangles, kind of northeast. They're having their neighborhood meeting August second. It's at Forest Hill Church. It's at six PM. Notification letters went out to everyone within three hundred feet of the property. This is required by our code, but it is hosted by the applicant and the intent is to facilitate an open dialogue between the adjacent neighborhood and the applicant. That's all I have.
What, what's the size of that property?
Oof.
Two, three hundred acres or better?
Yeah.
Pretty good sized property.
Yep.
All right, but that's August?
August second.
Second.
Six PM.
All right, very good. Well, encourage everybody to take a look, see what's going on there, see what may or may not be coming.
Thank you.
So appreciate that. Thank you, Lisa. Chief Greg Sharp. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
What you got for us?
Well, been a while since I've made the formal presentation to the commission. And there it is. Ahah. All right. So basically, what's going on at the fire department? The big thing is, we're continuing to work on the goals we set back in two thousand seventeen when I first came here as the fire chief. And one of the big things we're working on is improving community awareness. Our survey, we've done two surveys, one in two thousand seventeen and we just finished one this spring. And in both of them, it was clear that over sixty percent of the community thought we were a town department and didn't realize we were independent from the town and we're a nonprofit, private corporation contracted with the county to provide fire service to a forty-five square miles of Union County, including the town of Waxall. So that's one of our big things to get out there is let people know that we aren't a town department, we're private nonprofit incorporated. But the goal we set back in two thousand seventeen was to arrive in less than eight minutes, eighty percent of the time with enough trained firefighter EMTs to take care of anybody's emergency that they call us for. So how did we get there? Well, like I said, in two thousand seventeen, when I first got here, internally, we developed a survey and sent it out, got over three hundred responses to that one, repeated the same survey with a few different questions because this one was developed by the North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting Group, who is the League of Municipalities Fire Service Consultant. And so they did the survey very similar. Each time we got similarities, the percentages were about the same. And an overwhelming majority, over ninety percent, wanted us to arrive in less than eight minutes with enough people to take care of their problem, whether it's a house fire, motor vehicle crash, cardiac arrest, or just a straight-up medical problem. So that's what we've been working on for several years. Along with that, that same group, North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting, did a strategic operating plan with us this year and helped us look at where should fire stations be? How are we doing? What's our staffing supposed to look at? What are the risks in the community? And that was where that survey came from here in the spring that asked about how fast do you want us there? What do you think are priorities for us? Would you support tax increases for fire station apparatus, firefighter staffing? That kind of stuff. Because it's very important as we go to move forward, everything we, if we're going to move forward and improve, it costs money. So we got to make sure the community supports us in that. If they want eight minutes, it's going to cost something. So one of the big things, if you'll see FY twenty-two, we struggled to maintain four-person staffing, which would only allow us to staff Station eighteen. Through FY twenty-three, you can see at the very top, we basically had four people on duty more than ninety-five percent of the time the entire year. So we've stabilized that. We hired full-time firefighters in the spring of twenty-one and that all worked itself out to now we're actually seeing that, the benefit to that. And added to that is getting to six people or more on duty. And you can see, we're hovering in the sixty-five percent range of heaven six people, which means we staff Station eighteen, we staff Station twenty-seven, twenty-seven down by Jars. So again, that should start seeing response times go down. So again, also, we're budgeted for ten, so if we can get to ten, then we're staffing two out of Station eighteen and one down at Station twenty-seven. One thing we've developed and worked on is trying to do professional development and part of that is a firefighter apprentice program. People that come on the fire department now, if they're interested in becoming full-time career firefighters with us, we developed a firefighter apprentice program where they can come on, get their EMT. Once they've got their EMT, they spend some time with us, they look like they're going to be a good fit for us. We'll sponsor them through the Fire Academy, we'll pay them an hourly wage to be there Monday through Friday during the day. They come out, they work for us, not completely full-time, but permanent part-time, greater than thirty hours a week. They help us with weekend coverage and then they're on the list to the, for the next full-time opening. So one, it helps us to streamline my hiring process, so when we have an opening, we're scrambling. And two, it allows us to really get to know people and let them move through our process and them get to know us. And it's been very successful. As you see, we've developed ten fully certified firefighters in the last eighteen months and we currently have four more working through the process, getting their EMT and finishing up their fire classes. And I'm pretty confident they'll be nominated into the program by their officers when they finish up. So what else have we done to retain our firefighters? We recruit hard, but we also have to keep them. We've developed, we've upgraded our professional development program so that people can move through a process. We've added the rank of lieutenant that we're finalizing so people can move into that lieutenant's position, then be mentored by captains and be able to move up through the, the program. We were just able to implement a very market competitive pay structure to keep our career folks here and also to keep our part-timers here. It's, every, every one of us in Union County and the surrounding area, we're fishing in the same pond. So if you don't have good fish bait, you're not going to catch any fish. So we're finally in a position where we're actually fishing on par with everybody else. So I mentioned response times. So if you notice in FY twenty-two, it looked like there's a bit of a downward trend for eighteen and overall, but started to have an upswing, better response times at twenty-seven as we staffed it. Twenty-three kind of surprised me. We're still not really, we're kind of stable, but it almost looks like a little bit of a downward trend, like our response times are getting worse. And so it kind of surprised me because we're getting better staffing, so you would expect that to get better. Again, as you look at it over the two years combined, eighteen and overall are pretty static, the blue and the red line. Twenty-seven bounces along because again, it depends on if we're staffing down there. So what we're seeing is a slight worsening response time, so it's a concern. So what I was happy to see that North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting dug in some deep, deep data for us. And so again, we were looking at incidents. You would think if we had more incidents, that would screw up our response times because just more calls. This also surprised me, really six more calls in FY twenty-three than FY twenty-two. I was expecting two or three hundred more. Well, so if that's not it, well, maybe there's more calls coming in at the same time. So we're already out on a call and we're traveling from, say twenty-seven's not staffed, we go down to Jars for a call and then somebody in Lawson calls and we're traveling all the way back up to Lawson from Jars. Well, as you can see, twenty-two and twenty-three, pretty much the same, about fifteen, sixteen percent of the time overlapping calls. So that isn't it. So what is it? So when we look at response times, you're looking at communications, they're very stable. They're like, they're thirty seconds all the time. So they're not a problem. Turnout time, that's something we're trying to, to measure better because our software, we, we've changed it a couple times, doesn't allow us to measure it really well. Travel time, we can measure well. So again, our goal, eight minutes, eighty percent of the time, less than ninety seconds getting out of the station, eighty percent of the time. And then less than six minutes travel time is the key to eighty percent, to get to that eight minutes. So when we had North Carolina Consulting do it, they said the travel time over the six years that they had data was seven minutes and twenty-five seconds, eighty percent of the time. So that's one minute and twenty-five seconds slower than our goal of six minutes. Total response time is nine minutes and twenty-eight seconds, so one minute, twenty-eight seconds slower than our goal. Well, that means the stations have to get closer to, to calls because we have to decrease the travel. Because if you look at that, you just take the travel time of one minute and twenty-five seconds, fix that, we're at our goal if you carve three seconds off of our turnout time, which is one step. So it's the travel time is what's keeping us from getting our response times to where they need to be. So we're in the design process, getting ready to break ground on Waxall Creek, stage sixty-three, which is down at Waxall Creek and Quail Roost. That'll improve our coverage from eighty to eighty-six point two percent. We've been in discussions on Kensington Drive, hopefully could use the same design as we're doing for Waxall Creek. You add that station, our coverage goes up to ninety-two point seven percent. And as we planned in two thousand seventeen, we looked at having a Station eighteen on Waxall Parkway, Station sixty-three on Waxall Creek, Station sixty-four on Kensington, and relocate Station twenty-seven to South Providence and Davis. If we do all that, all the data shows we'll have a ninety-six point three percent coverage of our area. So that's excellent coverage with four stations. What this shows you is, when you put the Kensington Street Station online, you'll see a map just in a moment to show you what we're missing. The red circles show you where we go from missing eight minutes to getting to eight minutes. All of Lawson, all of Bonz Grove Church, a big section of gray byroom. So that's a whole look at is, so we know we need more stations, so the question for the public is, would you support a tax increase to do a bond for a station, to finance a station, for the apparatus and the staffing to make it happen? Overall, greater than seventy-five percent of respondents either said they would actively support or they would not oppose it, but they said either, neither oppose or support. So I count people that don't actively oppose as good people. So also, kind of going along with James Kelly talking about Waxall Parkway East, Waxall Parkway West is a huge improvement even without Kensington Drive. You still need Kensington Drive, but if you look at the map on the left, that's without Waxall Parkway West. All that gray area, most of Millbridge, Anklin, Quaylin, all of that is in the gray. Lawson stays in the gray, Bonz Grove Church is in the gray, Gray Byroom's in the gray. So they're all outside that six-minute travel time or eight-minute response. You add Waxall Parkway West and almost everything turns blue except for Bonz Grove Church and Lawson. So then adding the Kensington Drive station with Waxall Parkway West, you get to that eight-minute response time throughout the vast majority of the town, if not all of it. So that's what we're working on, trying to get to that goal of eight-minute response time, eighty percent of the time, getting those firefighters on scene quickly so we can take care of your emergency and make sure we save as much property as possible and we try and, and we try and save your family members when you call for us. Questions, discussion?
Thoughts and comments around? I have a couple. So how many of your staff are volunteers that don't get paid?
Hmm, let's see. Right now, active, because we just had a couple switch over to part-time, hmm, well, counting the guys going into the apprentice program, they're not getting paid now to go to class. Six, about ten.
About ten out of how many total?
Seventy.
So these guys are working for free to protect us?
Yes, yes.
Your budget is then managed by the county, correct?
Correct. Well, technically, it's managed by our board of directors, approved by the county, they set the tax rate for the funds.
They set the tax rate?
Correct.
Exactly. What's been their attitude towards tax increase to pay these gentlemen and ladies?
Don't increase the taxes. And we've actually been very successful over the last three years based on the reval and all that we've been able to get through when actually the tax rate has gone down. I looked at the history and I wish they had just left the tax rate alone when they first passed our fire tax at five cents on the hundred and we'd be very, very good. We'd probably have all those stations built and be working and doing everything we need to be doing. But they kept pulling it down and holding it and then this year, they said no tax increase and they've said no tax increase next year.
Wow.
And we're absorbing a safer grant. So, you know, we did a really good job. We, we do an excellent job of trying to find other funds and that safer grant hired the twelve career people and we've built our budget so that we will support them. They're not, they're not going away. But not increasing the tax when you're absorbing one point eight million dollars in salaries makes it hard.
Really does. I got to say, I'm not a fan of not paying these gentlemen and ladies that support us and serve us.
So I will tell you that the pay structure, we were able to work our budget around and do some, actually watching the town manager and how he works budgets and all that stuff for you all to make sure it works, not, nothing fuzzy, all transparent, all good stuff. They're, they're in good shape right now. But, you know, again, it's going to go up and we're going to need support from the community to say, yeah, we want to pay these folks to do the job. We want them close to us, they can get there quick and help us. And it just, it takes a little money. And the, and the big thing to remember is, you're either going to pay for it in your tax to us so that we can hopefully do the, do the best we can for you. I won't guarantee anything because there's a lot of variables. Or you're going to pay for it in your homeowner's insurance. And the great example, I just had a homeowner write to me from one of our spots, it's more than five miles from Station twenty-seven. And they said, my homeowner's insurance has gone through the roof. Can you please write a letter that says you have a tanker and you have support? And it'll drop my homeowner's insurance by four hundred dollars. And I was able to do that, so they're getting a big savings there. And for the people that live in Waxall, we went from a Class Six or a Class Nine in Providence Farms where there's no hydrants to a Class Four back in two thousand seventeen. So we're saving people a lot of money in their homeowner's insurance, but we got to be able to, you know, it costs something. But, you know, that guy's saving four hundred dollars and it would cost him fifty-six dollars in taxes.
And that was going to be my question as well. So the dollar amount that you would need to pay everybody, so to speak, I'm not going to hold you to all of it, but I'm just curious on a couple of things. So I think you just alluded to it. So you'd be looking to fully support, fully staff your department, your entire department. We'd look at an increase of fifty dollars a year in taxes?
So looking at, for the twenty-four budget that I was trying to get additional money to build Kensington and fully fund our, our folks that we have now was about fifty dollars, fifty-six dollars on like a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house.
A buck a week.
Right. You know, so now as we move forward, obviously, if we're building stations and putting more people in there, that is going to cost more, so it'll mean a tax increase for that. But again, it, it always, all the researches I've done, the tax increase is outweighed by the insurance savings every time.
Certainly. Think we need to pay more attention to that.
So, so it almost sounds like pay now or pay later. So if you pay like an extra dollar a week, like what you were saying, you would get the savings back on your homeowner's insurance because that will go up because you aren't able to meet some of these requirements of response times and things?
That's correct. The way I look at it, when I, I tell people, if you, if you pay the increased taxes and we staff and get the stations bill and get to you, we'll, we'll do our very best to save everything, those sentimental things. If you don't and we can't save that stuff, your insurance company will rebuild your house. But you won't get your photos back, you won't get your pets back, you won't get any of that stuff back. So we're, I've always looked at it, it looks like a really good return on investment, fifty-six dollars a year saves you four hundred dollars. For somebody like him, he's way out, he's way out there. Or, you know, it, it's, you usually get your money back from us.
So keep us broke so we can't provide. I guess that's what the thing is, right?
I'll, I'll tell you what, I, even though I'm not an official town department, this town has embraced us and I've learned a lot from that man right there. So no matter what they do to our budget, short of just take it all away, I am going to do my darndest to make sure our guys and girls are paid and they, they're here and they're ready to serve this town. So. to serve this town, so.
Chief, I commend you, really do. It's a really great job, there is a good collaboration between us and that, we'd love to provide you another home somehow. We'd like to do that, but I think, you know, again, residents have to understand that what we're all up against as well, this is not just whimsical, this is need, we have increased costs around us, even fuel for the trucks.
Yes.
All that has gone up, so, somewhere, somehow, you will pay the piper, one way, shape, or form.
Yes.
I think that we need to take that in consideration going forward, and certainly, you know, with our votes cast that way, so we influence all those elected officials that influence you, so.
Correct, yes.
Alright, any other thoughts, comments along the way?
I have a thought.
Pedro?
Uh, so Chief, you're saying that, that the county really hasn't offered, uh, a solution, a plan, uh, anything on the horizon that might help your particular situation, is that true?
That's correct. Now, I will say, initially, when we got the safer grant, and I made this clear when I, I spoke to the Union County Commissioners after they turned our budget down, um, they, they accused me of getting a safer grant without permission, and I said, no, no, I, I sat down with county staff, and we had a plan, and we built a plan. Now, you, you not approving a tax increase to finish that plan is the problem. We had a plan, and now it's been kinda dumped.
The county.
Chief, are you aware of what's happening, Sheriff Kathy and his jail, apparently?
I am.
Okay. Is it, is it fair to say that you're almost in a similar situation, lack of funding and lack of the availability of funds to take care of these core infrastructure needs? The county funds you, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Just like the county funds jail, and Sheriff Kathy, and all the good men over there. So, it's, it's very similar. Both are sharing that common lack of funds and lack of planning.
Yeah, so, and, and where that really costs a lot of money, um, Station sixty-three on Waxaw Creek was put before the Board of Commissioners, two thousand and eighteen, probably would've cost us two and a half million dollars to build back then.
Today is...
I'm at five point eight, and I'm sitting there with a pre-engineered metal building, um, you know, not anything astounding, um, and, you know, Kensington's been on the books since the same time, because we selected that location.
Maybe we should've started planning back in nineteen ninety-two?
Correct, yes.
So that it could get...
Right.
Okay, just a thought.
Or at least two thousand and eighteen, and then, you know...
That was before my time.
Yeah, right.
Just got here, not long ago.
Yeah, I, I, I could've...
I'm crying.
Yeah, I could've saved the taxpayers of Waxaw and the Waxaw Fire District a ton of money if we had just gone along with a plan back in two thousand and seventeen.
Because we always hear, uh, fiscal, being fiscally conservative and all these things, uh, but what are you really saving if you're kicking this can down the road? For, you know, for the sake of being fiscally conservative, what are you actually saving if you wake up one day, and your jail is in disarray, and now we're having troubles here? How are we being fiscally conservative?
I, I can tell you how you save. By doing that is, you waste three point three million dollars on a fire station that was needed back in two thousand and seventeen when I first got here.
I wouldn't call that a waste, but I, I know what you're saying.
Right, you know, could've easily, well, actually, we could've, we could've built Waxaw Creek in Kensington for the same price I'm building Waxaw Creek now.
No action puts us in a bind. Alright, appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Any other, any other Commissioner comments on that one? Alright, very good. Alright, so I'm gonna look for any Commissioner comments or emotion.
If nobody else has anything, I, I have some comments that I've prepared, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, please.
If y'all will bear with me. Um, Mr. Mayor, fellow Commissioners, oh, and I've written this down, by the way, because otherwise I'll forget. Uh, Mr. Mayor, fellow Commissioners, thank you for providing me with an opportunity to share some personal observations and thoughts for our good town. Last week, I attended my first C R T P O meeting in Charlotte. For those of you who don't know, the C R T P O is the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. This is the regional governing body that determines the roadway projects for our region. To give you an idea, there were leaders in the room from all over our area, including Iredelle County, Mecklenburg County, Union County, the Federal Highway Administration, North Carolina Board of Transportation, and the North Carolina Turnpike Authority. At the head of the board is Chairman, is our Mayor, Ron Pappas, and the first agenda item last week was the proposed Waxaw Parkway extension. There was a short presentation to the board, followed by a unanimous vote, and moving to the next stage, which is the public hearing that we heard about today. As a citizen of Waxaw, it was a truly hold-your-head-high moment that unquestionably demonstrates our commitment in placing Waxaw residents first. It was at this meeting, in this proud moment, that I reflected on the progress we are accomplishing as a town. As an example, our financial position is the strongest it has ever been, which is validated by our financial advisors, auditors, our double-A rating, and our stable tax rate. Our downtown historic preservation committee works tirelessly in its protection of our small-town look and feel, to the point where our town is winning awards and are consistently recognized at the state level. In furthering our commitment to the citizens, we now have a Main Street Advisory Board whose progress can already be seen by our local businesses. The oversight and strong leadership of Commissioner Weselick and Commissioner Simpson ensures that our Main Street businesses will benefit far into the future. The stability and smart management of our progress has never been better, but what should be clear is that none of these accomplishments are happening by accident. They are only accomplished by the dedication and experience of town staff and the faith of the community in our progress. Progress, however, does come with some challenges, and this past Sunday, during a sermon at Five Stones Church, I felt compelled to share some of what I've heard. In society today, we have seen an acceleration of mental health issues, and our town isn't immune to these issues. Here's some stats for our area. One in six adults in our area say that in a month timeframe, they experience some kind of mental health struggle more than eight days in a row. In our area, in this community, one in five adults have actually been diagnosed with anxiety or depression. And in our area, almost forty-five percent of adults say they have symptoms of depression or anxiety. Now, keep in mind, these are all adults who are willing to be polled, and who have acknowledged that they have symptoms of depression or anxiety. So, we know the numbers are actually greater than these. And in our community alone, one in five teenagers have considered suicide within a twelve-month As you are likely aware, we are beginning a journey into an election cycle in our area, and this time can be highly polarizing, that complicates depression, anxiety, or mental health issues. In this time, you may also be surrounded by messages of hate, derision, or the desire to wall you out of our community. Please know that you are valued, and you are loved. Early this morning, I asked, I asked our town to consider adding mental health resources provided by Union County to our website, and you should be seeing these very soon. Please know that all of us in the town today are unified in the building of relationships and not walls. It is further my hope that whether you've lived in Waxaw for many generations, or just moved here, or are considering a move to our town, that you will experience hope worth love as our neighbor. Mr. Mayor, fellow Commissioners, thank you for providing me with this opportunity.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate those words. I too heard that sermon this weekend as well, so it does hit home, those numbers are, are very real here, and probably only a snapshot of what really exists here and around us, so we need to pay attention to that as a community. We are a community, we should work together on everything that we endeavor, so appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else? Go to the cause, alright. Jason, thank you for those words, appreciate that. Alright, with that, everybody wants to go home and go to dinner? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're done.